Good evening, everyone. We will now call our业主's town council 2022 to work. This evening for public comment, several people have signed up. We'll give you your name and address of the address of the property. My name is who, when, nineteen eighty. As you're talking about the proposed setback on the property. So. Just, thanks for this. Looking at the ordinance, there's the question about thirty-one posses, we had to find the three ordinance. According to the ordinance, county property equation, of those, fourteen of those homes already had forty-one posses, they still have two. So that's almost fifty percent of the homes. It's just forty-five percent of the homes, already half of the ones that were thirty-one that were impacted by the ordinance. And I've heard a lot here talking about what's the impacts on the lake and quality of it. Some of those, they mentioned runoff of fertilizer, which is fertilizer in the backyard, runs down to the lakes. And of course, contamination, some wish to be second tank overflow, based upon rainwater and things like that. But I've not heard any impact of clearly the way that the quality of this one. Ooh, fortunate to lay down with the damage to that. Some of these things are given by the expert and EPA physicists. Don't push setback back. But I've not heard any scientific study that comes directly to how a pool. Thirty-five feet would impact, or pool in general, impacts the lake. If you're, of course, you own a pool, you wouldn't want to run your water, if you need to clean, into the lake. Because somewhere else, if you want to keep the lakes clean and protected off. That's something that's up to each individual homeowner and how they manage their pool. Of course, that's also up to each individual, how they manage their fertilizer, and whatever they put in the lungs back there. With this ordinance and setback, if we're talking about seawall and swell, that actually would be tackled on the runoff. Because you catch the runoff and have to hold it there, and not run into the water. So having this ordinance setback at thirty-five feet, with this seawall requirement, would actually help the lake in that current. Because it catches runoff from the river. When it catches up there, you're on pool, very in-ground, it's a crack that lays into the ground. It may really not impact the lake. You have an above-ground pool, it would of course, worsen if it runs away. We're talking about a deep-ground pool we're trying to protect. So those are my captain, of course. You know, the EPA statutes of. Requirements just take a seawall, that's what we're getting at. Can we engineer something that helps protect the lake, seawall swell, in condition with the thirty-five and setback? Actually help the lake be cleaner, rather than damaging it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, the public comment is Ms. Laura Granger.
Hi, I'm Mary Oakes, I'm a resident, Laura Granger. I live on Lake Gulliver for the last forty years, stakeover. I've also involved advocacy for the last twenty-five years. And I too have come about the setbacks tonight, but not to support it. The Butler Chain is now safe for water. I have it thoroughly at all the special protections which are out there, which include these fifty-foot setbacks. I saw where the two agencies that are tasked with protecting the lakes, the board and the department of environmental protection. And Orange County ECD have rolled in paper, they've made fifty-foot setbacks. As well as your town, like, salt to an extent. I live in unincorporated Orange County, we maintain all of our fifty-foot setbacks. I too have a seawall, I have a burning swell. That always stormwater gets in on that first flush. If your burning swell can fill, you can have breaches, if they're not maintained properly, there's a whole list of reasons. And it's not just the stormwater, it's other kind of public civic glory that also. These fifty-foot setbacks help keep the lakes clean. And so when I read some of the points, it was pretty obvious to me that you're going to require a whole harmless. Out there guaranteeing that this will not adversely impact the lakes, you're pretty much admitting there's potential liability here. And so the key point that I've learned in all of my years of advocacy is, if there's not a net environmental impact. And it's P, a net environmental benefit, sorry, benefit, then you don't do it. The answer is no, when they come in for a variance and they want to do things like this, the answer is no. Unless they can prove to you guys that there's some kind of a net environmental benefit. And so I just ask you guys, so I was rolling against that, to protect our lakes, you've always done that, I've been out here dozens and dozens of times. Never seen where anything's relaxed than like our lakes.
Ms. Granger, say five, three, three, one, west.
Hi, I'm Maria Gaines, eight two five, Oakdale Street. I do want to speak to this as well as the paving section. So in regards to this, actually, there was a discussion from our latest consultant about the impacts of pool water specifically. And like she said, you know, waters and soils, they have to be maintained, they're not, they fill up. I mean, with that soil, it's all along the wire, and they're still filling now, most of the pools to see them. So that water can make it in there, there's algae sites that we use in our swimming pools, we exorbitate our swimming pools. And that kills the wildlife and the habitat in fisheries nurseries. And it's all part of what makes it a naturally standing toward the water. It's not just about the setback or the nutrient, or the thing that comes from fertilizer. You have DRB unanimously as a board, as a committee board, that, you know, we take their vote seriously. They that we don't think that they should do this, they go unanimously. Each one of those people also stand as a citizen on their own comments that they don't, they shouldn't be done. I did reach out to some people today, I myself am guilty of thinking the meeting was tomorrow, and you guys know I'm there all the time. I actually had it on my calendar for tomorrow, so there are some people sending emails even after speak that are against this. I spoke with about fifteen residents and some of the emails started coming in just for the meetings tonight, that are against changing the ordinance. There is, you know, the only benefit here is to benefit residents to do what they want. Yes, there's existing pools, a lot of those pools were there, grandfathered in, laws change all the time. We try to make best decisions for the land, for the environment, as stewards of the landlord. Not to, to just do what's the best engineering solution, the best thing is to stay the most distance away. Nobody's saying the swell might not be beneficial, but it's still not better than just having the fifty-foot setback. In terms of the dirt road, I'm really paving between main and forest, paving fifth street. This is the first I'm hearing of that, so that kind of surprised me when I saw it on the agenda. I realized I do have group up to the Dixie hearing, and so I'm just wondering what the reason is that we're talking about paving that. I feel like the sound came out pretty strong a few years ago, but we don't want anything paved. Any portion of it for really any reason, so I'm, I'm not sure why that's on the agenda, but. And a lot of people were just finding out about that today, unfortunately as well. So you might need to give us some time to hear some more feedback from those emails that aren't coming today.
Just a point of clarification, those five two. From DRB for the recommendation of the. We had that, the statement at the last council meeting, someone.
Next up, Ashley Wong.
Ashley Wong, for a little bit of street. Just to address a couple of things that were discussed, so the McGuire water retention that's being held. She's right, it is being held, and that's its job, it is of a burning swell, it's a pool of water to retain it. And allow it to eventually soak in, so that is everything that she's saying, not a negative thing. Also, in regards to Orange County setbacks, there are many setbacks, as we have discussed, Brad has brought up. Other votes have discussed it, it's all based on lot size, so it's not a straight fifty feet in Orange County. It can be reduced if your lot size is smaller. Again, DRB vote was five to two, not seven to zero after the statement in the last one's meeting. There hasn't a correction rate, so I'm going to make sure that you guys are aware of that. And just a few things to remind you, we've been going through this process for a while now. Again, the town winner makes up less than one percent of the Butler Chain lakes. With that said, if I was just in Orange County and not in the town winner, based on the size of my lot, I would qualify for a reduced setback for a pool. So if I moved anywhere else on the Butler Chain, that was still in Orange County, obviously, I could get a pool. As my neighbors mentioned, there's fourteen of the thirty-one homes that already have pools. No, not all of those were grandfathered in. In fact, my next door neighbors, who the left of me, five weeks ago, the house I was just demolished. Their pool was put in place after this ordinance of fifty feet was put in place. The tractory just would confirm that at a previous meeting, and they are seventeen feet from the normal height. So again, not all of these fourteen homes are, are grandfathered in, there were some that were, through fact. Also, I reached out to ECD, they have no records of really pool failures, catastrophic failures, massive leaking or dumping into. You know, the soil or ultimately into the lake. I want to sort of put those records to see how often it occurred, and they just do not have them. Just to remind you guys of, of my property specifically, I have ninety-six feet of seawall. My seawall is eight feet tall, so four feet are below the ground and then four feet above the ground, so eight-foot panels. And essentially, if you guys were to approve a pool, and there was runoff, that water would have to travel to thirty-five feet to the seawall. And then eight feet down before it even impact the water. So what it would do is have to filter through that soil. Prior to Hurricane Ian, the top of my seawall was twenty-seven inches over the waterline. So over two feet over, after Hurricane Ian, my seawall was still sixteen inches above the water level. So when we talk about the normal high water elevation being a hundred years, Ian's actually a five-hundred-year storm. So my seawall was still well over a foot, over the water level. And then after the whole, the seawall is still twenty-three inches above the water level. Finally, I have discussed that the proposed ordinance change with my neighbors and a lot of the residents in the town. And I have over eighty signatures of people who not only approve this ordinance change. But they also think it will better protect the Butler Chain of Lakes. I have a new ship pool of the seawall, the whole mark, full premise, and stormwater retention area. So they do feel that it's more protected than the current setback.
Three zero two five, we just wanted to say, thank you. Mark Solis here, twenty-five years, and currently serve as the chairman of Orange County Environmental Protection. I passed through the, 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 sorry. I was asking a few, the ordinance revision. My, my review and my opinion is that you, it's a better environmental ordinance, I think. One, just legally, you can bring a very tight language to it. Minimizes your exposure and risk, you're talking about a very limited number of lots that could be impacted by this. And it defines who you're coming for a very, set of, or, or a need for. Secondly, I think the inclusion of the seawall. Minimizes the risk for direct runoff into. The, you know, the water body in the Butler Chain, and or the inclusion of a formal treatment, that, that, the swell. Between those two, you're going to really remove the risk of nutrient runoff and pollution, okay? Which is really the big impact on the lake. A thirty-five or fifty-foot buffer of, of hayed grass and mutated grass doesn't move the, you know, one way or the other. What you need to be able to do is track the pollutants, hold them, retain them, and do, you know, remove them before they enter the water. So, it might, my, my opinion, I think you've got to give an ordinance here that you should approve. And I'm available for any questions. On this matter and or any.
Only this time, we're going to have a ceremony, swearing in for two or new. Certainly welcome for two. Next up is, I didn't have three, these are time, I didn't see the public hearings. I give a second final here. Ordinance, town council, town, with your Florida, and then some setback in ordinance for canal front lots. And then section seven point zero, two point zero, three, three, eight, three, part of the seven of the town. Design canal front lots, lots, and their associated decks, on canal front lots, lots, setback, three five feet. Now, subject to specific requirements, indicated by the hearing, providing for separability. This time. Six eighteen, we're starting your town council meeting. Zero nine, at this time, all those other things. Do you want to go first, Brad? Sorry, I'm sorry, I did not know you were going to present.
No, I can still, third second. Spoke about them, just as the councilor and director of extension service, not the company. This ordinance is considered reducing on canal front lots, fifty to thirty-five feet, with several conditions. I don't agree on the bend or end of the ordinance, but there are several conditions that they have to meet to be able to do that. I'm getting different questions from you, I can answer those. Just two points I do want to bring out tonight, though, is, one is, if this is adopted. Folks that are on it now can still come forward to the variance process and go through that process with the town. And then ultimately, if the town comes to you all, if he wants to approve it, you could place conditions on those variances also. If they came forward to, similar to what you have in this ordinance, if this is approved. Same on the other side, if this is not approved, this, this evening, you know, people could still come through the variance process. And you can still condition your variances with these type of conditions, because your code does allow for conditions to be placed on variances if they are approved. So I just want to make sure that everybody was aware of that, that is a potential risk for that also. But with that, I have nothing else to add, if you have any questions down the hat.
Thank you, Brad, we appreciate that. Any additional public comment on this ordinance number? Two thousand two thousand nine. Steven Lidders, please. What's your name, Matt?
Sorry. My town, it appeared last month that we had exploding swimming pools, we had pools where catch stopping failure. I don't think that has anything to do with fifty feet. I think what has to do with it, we got fifty feet, picks up oils and breaches that come off the driveway, cleaning the pool deck, et cetera, then it filters it. Now, I do think the seawall is a great addition, but I think when you take away that natural filter system, that fifty-foot vision. You've taken away, you know, forty percent of that filter, which I don't think is good. I think we've got ordinance in place, it's fine, and I wouldn't see why we change it. I think when you have one house that may have built something illegal, you know, like the one we mentioned there. It should go back to ordinance, and it wasn't built correctly, that's one thing. But when you take these thirty-something lots and make them all of areas to what we have now, that's a whole different environmental impact. Let's tell you why, probably it's ninety feet times thirty, times fifteen feet of. Area of vegetation, that is going to filter the water to what it is now. So I'm just trying to say, exploding pools is not an issue, it's the green water that you got, providing, that's important, thank you.
Any further comment on this?
I guess the number of impact at home, it is around thirty houses, but almost half of it, or forty-nine percent already have pools. So the ordinance gradually affected the other fifteen, sixteen. So, that being said, I don't think the homes were built illegally. Whenever they were filed for permitting, someone approved them, even if permitting placed. And the key point here was, somebody got variance. There's a clause in the set, you have that show hardship, you know, the variance you had. Right now, all those homes on there, because you bought them, you knew they were there, was determined, there is no hardship in putting a pool. Even though the home was built in nineteen fifty-something, and the variance was set in nineteen seventy, fifty-something. Right away, that became the line of word, you cannot do it anymore, and that became a hardship. But that's not recognized as a hardship, so you can't just go ask our variance class, what is the definition of a hardship in this case? There are a couple of clues out there.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Any further public comment on this? Mary, please. Do you know? How many of those? Falls that you indicated, if any of those would be thirty-five foot?
Oh my gosh, my backyard, is that one, two, three? Just from my backyard, I'd like to create a pool that would be fifty-foot setback. One of five, maybe two right across the, they're all within fifty feet of setbacks.
Okay, but you mentioned there were.
There were around, according to the property equation, there were up to fourteen. I'm not going to let him back there to look at it, but the ones that I can see from my backyard, all three are within the fifty-foot setback.
Okay, I just wondered if he has. What is your name and address?
Good evening, I'm Ben Mace, I've got forty-three main street, I'm on the thing out. As a gentleman who was the approver for Orange County State. Fifty feet versus thirty, there is no. Market difference in impact on the lake and chain, or chain of lakes as a whole. And several of us along the canal, who would like to build in the future? What would, and this is a question, that's, oh. What would prevent us, if this variance or this gets voted in on, what would prevent us from requesting thirty-six feet, thirty-four feet, thirty feet? What, what is that cut? How many times do we need to do this? Is, is there a process on, on, so if this is voted on, no tonight?
This was voted no tonight, and the process would take over, would be the normal process of variance.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say, I fully support my neighbor in this effort, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
I'm Sally Walker, and I'm on two one two, East First Avenue. I'd like to say that I'm in favor of this proposal. And I did go out, I speak to many of the Hady neighbors that are listed. That signed the petition, none of them are, got in favor of it. And as the ordinance said, it's protecting the waterways even more so than they are protected right now. The pools that are there currently, overall, and I was like, do not have seawalls, there is no protection. In addition to that, as the subject that you were set, there's no difference between thirty-five and fifty feet, provided that the water's not flooding them. So I don't understand why you continue with the argument of saying, oh, we're not good. So I would just like to say I'm in favor, thank you.
The, the reason we discussed this immediately is that this is part of the process that we're. The ordinance, you have to go through the proper procedures and processes, to be sure, and all times, public input, even if it's. It's actually drafted, and that's also. Keep all that process. Any additional public comment?
I, this before, I've spoken at the last town council meeting, I'm Mary Oaks, out of the third floor of the fifth street. And I, I talked to probably twenty of the people that signed the petitions, all around Bayville, and I'm in Bayville, the south side.
Those are public hearings, that's twenty-seven PM, we're. Council, I'm glad you have one that sounds like you, that's zero nine. Drop the two, any further comments, questions? I'm sorry.
So Brad, I just have a question for Brad. This ordinance is enacted, you know, with a forty-five percent of pools that are currently in place, any modification would fall under this one, right?
That's correct.
So, you know, going back to the, the comment earlier of, it doesn't better the environment, don't pass it. I would argue that the engineering solutions provided in this ordinance, combined with the fact that we were better. But, you know, any, any modifications to the existing pool is why we should support this. Retaining the water and behind the seawall and a retained swell. I have a review that I have, it's a better engineering solution than a fifty-foot setback. A straight runoff. Down to the waterline is much more impactful to the, to the lakes than the configuration we're mandating in this ordinance.
I have a question, I have a question for Brad, you're standing here. Okay, so Orange County, who takes up, I guess, ninety-nine percent now of the Butler Chain of Lakes. Coastline or something like that. Do they have, somebody said that their setback for connect is similar to what we're requesting here. I guess, is it only? I guess, is it only for the nails?
No, they're structured differently. Their setbacks off the lakefront are governed by the zoning districts, which relates to the lot size. So in the case where the agriculture, the state zoning district, which are some properties, those are one acre, they require fifty feet. But there's these other areas, particularly on the east side, or business east side of the lake, that are smaller, they have smaller zoning, and I believe those are thirty to twenty-five feet setbacks, so it's based on the zoning.
It's not even that they're on canals, they're on the lake.
They're on the lake.
But they're small properties, similar to the ones we're talking about on the canal.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And Brad, there's no requirement for sea wall or retained edge or anything?
Not in our town, I'm sure.
At the So I think the majority of the lots that we're talking about are experience lots, it's really more about house placement. Fire change. Your ordinance is many cases, the collective's argument. So I mean, if you're fairly decent, but
Trying to get fifty feet back and build a house.
Well, it just depends where the place, I mean, I don't I'm making sure if somebody can push their lots back a little bit, I wish mine back, but I probably would have, you know.
Brad, I do have a question. If this does afford to pass, anybody with an existing pool, if they go in for a permit for any kind of modification or updating, then if they do not have a sea wall, would they be divided into?
The way that your co-instructor, if they were to trigger basically fifty percent rule in terms of the value of the improvements, then we would make them come up to standards in current standard. So now if they were to expand the footprint, absolutely, they would have to requirements.
I was also looking at, you know, even if it doesn't have a sea wall.
Like you say, if they wanted to So if they want to say they wanted to extend the debt down to thirty-five feet, they'd have to have a sea wall with all the apartments.
Thank you.
That is very just re-surfacing, really.
They're not changing.
Comments? I have a question, I have a Friday night, so I can explain, because I just have a little question, just a few minutes ago, that we have any reports of any kind of, you know, pool renovation and accounts in the lake, is it?
I have not received any reports of those kinds of issues.
I have a sea wall, it's been underwater since these two storms, and it is a hundred year wall, and it held up until now. Well, except for two thousand and four, I know, probably. But you know, even the existing sea walls are just sometimes not high enough. And it was probably built fifty years ago.
You can call it, sea walls are good, sea walls are bad.
Good question. Sea walls now have to have rocks or something.
The river.
River. Will this be the same situation?
Yes, because all these sea walls still have to go through permitting for environment protection.
So they're, you know, they've done that, and as long as they abide by it, that actually is better for the lake.
Just a quick question, so Ms. Walker said that she had twenty-seven inches of free board during Ian, and then how much free board
So my sea wall was built in twenty twenty-one, obviously I have the EDP in their current standards, since it is a new sea wall. So prior to Ian, from the water height to the top of my sea wall was twenty-seven inches, a little over two feet. And then literally the day that even clear, the rain finally stopped or settled down on the outside, I was still sixteen inches, my top of my sea wall was sixteen inches above the high water. So again, whenever people build their sea walls, regardless of how old they are, they look at the hundred year mark at that point. So moving forward, now that we've had Ian, again, I'm at work for the EDP, but I would assume that now we're going to take Ian into consideration when we're looking at new, normal high water elevations. So I would assume that the height of the sea wall may increase for anybody wanting to put a pool in and to ultimately have to put a sea wall in in the future. And that question, Mayor, you had mentioned, you called us standard sized lots. I don't recall, but Brad had mentioned it, how we get the reduced setback, I don't know that we have standard sized lots. And again, that ordinance of the fifty foot was put into place in the nineties, was it ninety? Ninety-two, ninety-four, somewhere around there? My house was built in fifty-five, unless I tear it down and move it closer to the road, I would have no chance of even meeting the fifty foot. And even then Brad and I spoke and said, he still doesn't know with what the front setback was required, that I would ever meet a fifty foot. So that's kind of the hardship for our older homes on these canal lots. But Brad, do you know, based on my lot size, if I was not in a town, apparently I was just in Orange County, what my setback would be or get to?
I do not know, because I don't know what they do.
It really doesn't matter what it would be outside of the town, because you know, our own rules, our decisions, that's what we're talking about. When I refer to a standard sized lot in town, it's about a hundred by a hundred and sixty. Fairly much, you know, a lot of the lots are that size of standard lots. I believe they are up here, you know, as well. You know, where people place their homes at the time, you know, that's
Out of my control.
You know, it was out of your control, it was in someone's control at that time, you know, just like just like I place mine where I did, if I had, and I probably pushed that feet forward as well.
Me too, yeah.
You know, there's a lot of things that go into that. And I don't make reference to the standard sized lot to take away from your argument in that way. I am more concerned about the many smaller lots that are in town on the lake that natural inclination will be to then push this further. And there's a lot of lots that have very large farms already on that, very close to the lakes. And there's not the same amount of room that, or the same amount of surface space, or purpose space rather, that you would have. Those are, those are part, you know, every, you know, our job up here is we have to make sure that we factor everything, take all the information, synthesize it to do this. Best for the lakes, best for the community, best for our residents. You know, it's, it's a delicate compromise, all we're seeking balance. So we just make those comments just to give ideas of what it's like.
Sure, and I understand that completely, obviously you guys don't want to open up a can of worms and have everybody in the town applying for variances or trying to overturn ordinance. And in fact, that's why I think you guys looked at changing the ordinance to just thirty-one and outdoor homes, so that it does not open up to every waterfront home in the town's border. So again, I think doing this ordinance versus a variance is more inclusive and protective of the, you know, I guess the potential for variance.
Mayor, just for more purposes, we allow one person to question back and forth, then you have to open it up back to the public comments. Well, this is a question asked, this is the person from the council itself. I just don't want to start back and forth with who's for it and who's against it, but that would give everybody the same
Generally, that's
Yeah, that's, that's
I don't know what's cheaply, because we do desire to be that. I need everyone to know where everybody stands in terms of, I think now, oh, you're favorite, so maybe, I'm sure they have to, the council will make that final determination. Any questions that we have for Brad or anyone else here, any council?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and thanks everybody for the time you put into this, Brad, residents, et cetera. And especially the ERB. I'm opposed to changing the setback, because our own experts, the people we rely on, the ERB, our lakes consultant, Orange County EDP, et cetera, has recommended against it. And it's also about standing for our waterway. Our lakes are taking a severe reading over the last couple of months, you know. I used that sea wall, I don't have one anymore, I used to eat it. But, you know, I'm introducing other risks to the water quality. Again, there's great arguments on both sides, I can see how, you know, having further restrictions would certainly help with water retention, that type of thing. But still, our experts, the people we rely on, agree, or there's defendant proof, that that's the case, then I'm opposed to changing the setback.
Point clarification, I'm not sure which county.
Yes, sir, we did, we checked it out, Mr. Hanson, but we did, said that he supported the town maintaining it. I did ask him and say, oh, the Orange County has a different law, and the last year what we did is, and he said, well, that's what Orange County does. So you'd be, Mr. Hanson, he did say he would recommend the town maintaining.
Mr. Hanson's position?
I don't know what exactly it's entitled to.
I know he's the chairperson of the general makes.
He's sort of raising
But his function is the David Hanson, correct?
David Hanson, yes, sir.
Does that answer correctly, Mr. Rosley's in the soul review as well, correct?
I'm actually on the final protection division. Sure. Okay, are you recording this?
If you're not, I'm here.
One more question, yes, sir?
I just asked, if you were a consultant for the environmental protection.
Yeah, I sit on chairman of Orange County Environmental Protection Commission, supporting the word that reviews, documents, science of that, and very easy quotes. And a lot of the orders sits in front of Orange County right now, are up for review, and they are considering different setbacks. And in many cases, we are looking to have ordinances cover bigger areas, refine setbacks, to minimize the not, the not of variance that's a common EPE, that's the Environmental Protection Division, and they are a majority authority for Orange County for shoreline and dock sea walls.
Question? Yes. Comments? Questions? Seeing none, any further motion?
Motion to approve, you were in separate.
That's just that, for a second.
Agreed.
Second, councilperson. Comments, questions? Input, councilperson Mark? All right, that's good, you know.
Down.
Bye.
Bye.
Motion is not made, three, two. So through new business, there are consent items. Your request for a fifty-five meter, requested care of the water, variance to the I would suck setbacks over a unusual ERB recommends
Question?
Question, maybe? Council member? Okay. So the house is currently already five foot? Is the setback of the house that the screen isn't attached to, is it currently five foot? I'm trying to figure out why this hasn't approved, so.
Yeah, the, no, the house itself is at eleven feet from the side property line. The pool, though, in your ordinance, your pool, your ordinance allows pools to have the deck within five feet of the property. Water attend to the deck within five feet. So that's why the request is for five feet, is to place the screen enclosure over the deck for the pool. He does have the permit for the pool, because the pool does meet all the requirements for the pool. So he does not have a permit for the screen enclosure of that. So the, it will be, it'll be over the pool is where this will be located. Where this is located is really the only place that they can't place a pool on this property, because it does have the three goat frontages, as well as the angle of the home, this is the location where it does fit without triggering any other barriers that may be required or that, for this property.
So Brad, an issue here tonight is not the swimming pool itself, but the screen enclosure.
Yes, sir. And the DRB did recommend a pool by go to six to zero, they had five minutes.
How far is the screen from the pool?
Screen is over the
Yes.
If I look at it, it is probably, the pools, it's about ten feet roughly, for the, the decking area from the plants.
So the setback requirement is ten feet?
Well, for the deck, for the pool, it's five feet for the deck, ten feet for the water, for the pool, water. So it's five feet for the pool. The house is twelve and a half feet.
And it meets that criteria now?
The house, no, the house is slightly less than that, it's about eleven feet from that side property line.
I would like to point out, this is a very unusual lot that has three front yards.
Right.
Technically, so they they would, according to what the ERB discussed.
There are also, in the property next to here, there's an existing screen enclosure there as well already. So this would be next to a mountain, that's already been constructed.
It doesn't change the deck in any way, it doesn't change anything other than the fact that
Just create, right, your coach says Yes, sir. Correct.
Additional comments, questions? Seeing none, link for motion, question to approve? Councilperson Mark?
Second.
Second, councilperson Williams. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, we can go to a councilperson votes.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All right.
And the variance process. Next up is, I have a meeting for ordinance, and we will resolution per Actually, it's not a resolution, five, four, dash, zero, sorry, dash, one, four. And this is to amend the year of resolution of town council, town owner, or pertaining to the town's personnel policy. Revising and clarifying special services. Longevity administrative policy. Robbing the advocate, if it's like
Yeah, most of the chapters are, the way that it's written states that every year past your anniversary date, you get that longevity award. The intent was to get that longevity award the year of your milestone. So you're not getting an extra day each year, or two days each year, after ten years, so on and so forth. So the intent was to give it the day of, or the year of your milestone, not every single year, so on and so forth.
Council any questions? Is this applied retroactively, this, so it's been nice seeing you, Dorothy? It was like seven days.
Based on the error again, once it was an option, then it became that time, yes.
Yes.
All right. Any additional? Link for motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Councilperson Rose, sorry. Second, councilperson, questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we can go to the councilperson, Mark?
Aye. All right.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty two, dash, one, four, has to change. Tonight, we also have a first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-two, dash, ten. This is a first reading, and it's revision to the town ordinance, still in line, our law. This is an ordinance of the town, owner, or for pertaining to health, safety, water, ending and updating Article Three, Chapter Twenty, the town's two ordinances entitled bill cards, providing for separability, qualification, and effective date. First reading, council, we will have a public hearing and a second.
Data for several purposes. One of the main reasons we did this, to be honest, is everybody said my road is the worst, no matter what, and that's all they spent, all of that. So it, you know, it takes away some of that because we actually have proven that the dollars say, well, yeah, sure, road is, that's why I see what this road is. Okay, and we're gonna have that on the scene first. Ace of mind. Tony, when was our last one?
Twenty fifteen.
I thought it was about then.
Curious to do the last survey, will you do a survey prior to this two thousand fifteen? I just wanted to.
I'm gonna turn it over to John, because I wasn't here, and he can answer that question.
Hello, oh yeah, I'll do that one. Um, no, Q E S actually, to be honest, Robert was the one that brought this to our attention for the town, to able to build a C I P, or us building inventory of all of our roads. And so he brought that company in, not necessarily company, but the idea. And then we went out, did a competitive bid, got these guys on board, and did a full assessment of all of our asphalt, and actually they did the assessment of the dirt roads as well. And tagged it, we had eight miles of dirt roads. So I think it was one of those things that was really good for us to be able to have a C I P in place, and to what G's point was, for us to be able to say, no, here's our pavement index, here's where our next roads are gonna be, and actually build a solid C I P place.
And that's, that's the power of the school, is you did that in the model, and you know what they have.
Yeah, typically, you would do it every five years. Yeah, typically, you would do it every five years, we pushed it a little, so we're now at eight.
Just several roads that weren't made, or yeah, I mean, it finds you.
Yeah, so we'll pick up, yeah, we'll pick up a lot of those, and do this assessment. But the beautiful thing about using Q E S, I know it's tough, but in today's economy, we got a pretty good price, because we've already got the inventory bill with them, so they already have all that information in place. So it's less than we paid initially, but still kinda a little bit higher than I wished, but we tried to negotiate that.
We own the data.
We do, we own the data, we own all of it. Their job is to just come in and reassess, so we have the data tables, we have all the tables that are already built, so that's where we are getting a pretty good discount with using them. So anybody else would have to come in and rebuild that, because they don't own it.
Right, there's a lot of, you know, everybody knows this now, a lot of approach to it. You know, obviously, in the end, it does kinda pay for itself, especially if you get that.
Come a ten grand less than like eight years ago, which is good.
That regard, it also helps us, so being able to really quantify, why we're making what we do. It helps us prioritize, uh, something where I could add some opinion, like correction. Uh, I had a question about the A P T hours, daily traffic, is that something they can compare to the previous, or, or when they do this study? Make sure that we can see where things are going, I know where they're going, but it would be nice to have a comparison.
Yeah, no, what they will do is they'll get the A D T stats from Orange County, and then be able to, because they'll incorporate that into their design study, to realize how much wear and tear we have on our roads, and then be able to, once that's, that'll help them with the projection, what we call the pavement index, and then that'll help them on that. So part of the study is for them to look at what happened with A D T from two thousand fifteen, two thousand twenty-two, and then make the assessment, because that is really about the formulation of the program, to see the more traffic you have, the quicker the wear and tear happens, and so that helps us with our C I P, right? And so that's good.
Maybe we can do origin, I don't think, paper.
Well, you know.
Some certainly, but then we have to review the rights.
Yeah, but we do have to be careful, because we have the interlocal ordinance, and the reason we have that is because we wanted to make sure that never four lane our roads coming into town. So we've taken on that part, and that's what Robert and Tom are doing, and so we're trying to be good stewards of what we said we wanted to do, was take on the responsibility of the roads, so there would never be four lane through our interlocal.
Yeah, with, in, in your hundred percent version, with the, have the, this is, we're like, relevant to some of us. I do believe, I think there's some responsibility there, you know.
I'm not saying it, I'm not saying it's right, I'm saying it was protecting ourselves.
Very different things.
Yeah.
And we continue to work with, with our county partners, our good relationships over there, to continue to work with this.
Yeah, that's a good.
Especially now, you know, with the transportation, so that's not passing, you know, we're kind of back to sort of, so we'll, fashion, that we can directly attribute to some of the changes around us.
But the good news is, we've positioned ourselves with a C I P index, and with a pavement management index, to position ourselves to have those conversations with the Orange County, before we haven't ne- never had that before, you know? So that's good.
I'd like to make a motion to, we got a motion to.
Any further comments or concerns? Seeing none, and voting the council person first.
Hi.
Hi.
No, payment, man, I just.
Mister Mayor, can I make a point of clarification on my staff report, please? I was doing, I, I'm gonna make a clarification on this staff report. I did eight staff reports for this agenda, so please forgive me for this. I meant to say fifteen dollars per yard. The staff report says fifteen dollars per hour. It doesn't change anything in your proposal from them, because the proposal clearly says fifteen dollars a square yard. So my apologies.
I think that's detailed a little further in the, yeah.
Yeah. And, and China, is this work already been done?
Oh, absolutely, this is all the work for Ian to move everybody's right-of-way debris up to Windermere Recreation, right after the storm.
Okay, and have we received the deal?
Yes.
And it's within forty days?
Yes, well, yes, the invoice, the amount I'm asking for is what they invoiced us for, yes.
And this will be part of the, at the protective measures?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Also, well done, all done before the deadline, so I think you get a hundred percent, ninety or a hundred, hundreds?
You get a hundred percent, and if you don't finish it, it's, it's.
So, yeah, if you don't finish it in time, like, you know, we're struggling a little bit, you can end up down at seventy-five or eighty percent. John, who is?
I need a motion to, to the council person first, please.
Second, second, council person, David, any further questions, comments, or concerns? Council, seeing none, we need the council person, like you.
Aye.
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 Repair our pavement in our waste row, this is about sixty-six thousand. It's a little day, and a sad first.
Yes, the day that will live in infamy, Waste Row. Um, we had an issue with Waste Row, they, um, I think they had a new driver hit a sign, and when they hit the sign at Lee and Sixth, um, they ended up causing a leak in their tank, and they dragged that diesel fuel onto our roads and onto the newly paved Lake Butler Boulevard. So we were in constant contact with them about this, the town manager has spoken to our reps, they know this is coming, but because of the threshold of funding required to make that repair, it needed to come to town council. It will go through Waste Row for them to reimburse us for this. Secondly, later in that day, they lost that back axle. When they lost the back axle around the roundabout at Park Avenue, they scraped the pavement substantially, and so we had to contact them about that as well, and so the repair quote is here for approval this evening for that as well.
First, your group, second, last question. Hang on, let's sit for the record here. Right at that issue. And the council person, Mark, do you have a question? Did they notify us that they ran over the sign?
I believe so, no, um, the truck came to a stop, say, twenty, thirty yards, maybe?
Yeah.
Oh, they ran over the sign at Sixth and Lake Street?
Yeah.
Over there, but they stopped over here, like, oh. And, and so are they paying to replace the sign, the solid, the bank?
Yes, they're doing that, too.
Everything that is attributed to their issue, they're gonna be reimbursing the town, uh, through their insurance barriers, or through, um, the invoicing.
And so the, the tank was punctured over here, I think, basically, got stopped here. So was there any other?
We, um.
Roadway that we can identify?
No, no, my staff and actually Mister Fitzgibbon rode the whole route to ensure that we got everything that was necessary. The reason, you don't have the signage on this, is because that actually is within the town manager's threshold, so it didn't need to come to you, that's why you don't see that.
Okay, got it, thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah.
So one could be a digital question. Name certain. Yes, or this or something, so we make certain, and just align into the situation where, for whatever reason, you know, they've been good partners for a long time, but, you know, they're like, hey, this is more than we want to take on this contract, and walk away, and then we already paid, I don't think that'll happen.
Yes, so we should have the, the full the amounts, um, and then also in the contract, they are responsible for the negligence of any of their employees, and the scope of the services that they provide.
So I just, I ask, and if there's a, so. Questions, comments, or concerns, leave that one. Can you get to the council person?
Yeah.
Now, who's? All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that motion carries. Thank you, also. Next up is to me, is the item number four, to the pavement of West Fifth Avenue, for native forest, up to sixty thousand dollars. I spoke to Robert about this this afternoon, I'm sure, staff. For me, too, we are cautious, we believe that, that, you know, we have a little bit of nature over there, we had middlesex in town, so, my head, next to that particular project, but I think there is something that, that we have discussed as a council previously, that we may make new decisions, or bring thought, you know, given a lot of time, that's a little bit. Council, of course, after we hear from staff, we're able to discuss this, we're able to use our council decides, but I just wanted to put that out there, before we get up, just to kind of.
Yeah, um, and the reason this came about, I mean, we've been talking about this and talking to you for twice in time, and with the addition of the new pavilion, parking lot, and with the additional parking spaces that we created with the temporary facilities, um, and the amount of traffic, especially not just pedestrian traffic, but the amount of traffic with cars, because they're accessing that parking lot, was to, okay, can we incrementally add some paving over here, and create the parking spaces as well, that are on the south side, uh, to make sure that they're showed up? Uh, this is in no way a indication of what we're doing as far as the entire town, so as far as us looking at other areas where we're paving, we're not doing that. Uh, we're not looking at paving the, the parking lot, we just put an apron there, uh, because if we pave the parking lot, then we have to deal with the stormwater issues. This is just, you know, making sure it's a, it's a safer area, um, because it is well trafficked, and again, the lighting out there is not the best, and with the new pavilion coming along, too, we just figured, okay, it's, we got middlesex coming in for these two other repairs, let's see what the cost for this repair here. Uh, we have not held a lot of workshops, a lot of public information workshops, as it relates to this specific, uh, paving, but again, it would just be from that brick section to the, um, the edge of Fifth and Forest, nowhere beyond that.
So it's basically from the bricks, which you're writing about, uh, for the dumpster right, 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 right?
That's right.
To Forest, the parking spots on the south, apron into the shared parking lot.
That's right.
Yes.
So just want to give everybody a little scale, and so, obviously, there's causes and all of that, we'll be there for council to figure this out.
The question, what would, what would it cost, maybe, like, a parking lot as well, if you were just to fit from where the bricks are, just extending the bricks to Forest? Would that, what would that be?
I don't know what the exact cost would be, um, and I know, we have had questions about, so can you make it look like bricks, put stamped concrete, or whatever, I think that a lot of people are steering away from that at this point. I'm not a fan of the bricks, obviously, with a lot of the areas that have bricks, um, and all the issues that have related to that, if that is something that you want to explore, we can get a cost, I'm sure it'll probably be a lot more than what it's.
That's probably double.
Well, I, I think this is a little bit history, too. So, the issue, I think everyone is a fan of the bricks, the issue is that they're not a small problem, which essentially means that you put a concrete under it, so you build a road, and you put bricks on top of them, otherwise, we have, obviously, everybody else's role, so, is that you have continual maintenance issues, right? There may be some better solutions, or solutions to that, but I tell you, I don't think it will give you difference, it certainly makes it more appealing aesthetic, I like it more, too, it's gotta be, for a long time. And seventy-five percent of that will be covered by the state, if you don't, it's a cost.
Yeah.
No, that's a great question, and that matters, yeah, and I mean, I think that, and listen, that is what we want, and that's what we should tell staff, and then we'll, you know, I want us to do things right, and to spray the cost, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a, I always thought it was, we learned it hard, right? Well, it's young, that's the cool, it is, it would, it is going to create an extension for downtown, you know, business district, so that's definitely something that we should maybe look at, uh, you know, I, I understand the whole reason behind this, I think it's a great idea, because we have the parking lot, we have the pavilion coming in, all that kind of stuff, however, um, you know, I, I don't think we should have, I think we should have had more input or more discussion before bringing something like this to the table, because I've personally gotten three calls today about this, and, yeah, it seems, in other, some people's minds, it seems to be trying to slide it in under the table, kind of thing, that's clearly not the case, you have opportunity with middlesex, and the pricing is great, and it's really, you know, a necessary thing, because it can increase traffic, but I think we know better than to, you know, try and nail this in, to a, you know, I didn't know, uh, till my first rep, and then, so I was kind of caught off guard as well, although I do agree with the fact, it's a good idea to do that. And so, you know, and that's why we're here, you know, that, even that, we don't even allow that perception, I guess, or have that conversation, you know, so you promise it, and Robert and I talked about the Saturday as well. Here it is, it's in front of us, we can talk about it, trying to move on to an item about, but it's, it's worth that, I think. Oh, this would be a higher traffic here. Where is that train on this price?
I think it all depends on the time, Tom, you correctly, they have such in twenty nineteen prices, but it's always when they have several projects in one area, um, so I'm not sure if this is gonna be, if this price will be held at the same as it is right now, um, but yes, again, this was not something that we had public workshops and public input on, we have no objection to doing that, if that's the way that town council wants to move, uh, but we can talk to middlesex tomorrow, and see if we're gonna hold that price for a certain amount of time, um, before moving on this.
Would this have been done in conjunction with the Lake Butler Boulevard and the gouging?
Yeah.
All at one time, I mean, it makes sense, kind of the scale, of course, do it all at once, but, but if we hold off on this for a month, can we hold off on the others for a month, or is that already?
Well, that was kind of our intent, was to make sure that the economy scaled to the others, and, um, we didn't look at, obviously, we wanted to make sure we have the eight-inch face, inch and a half, twenty feet, whatever, a good, solid eight-inch face with a L B R four inch, ninety-eight percent density, and so that's kind of what we were doing. The other thing that we were looking at, when we were discussing with Robert, is ADA accessibility for our farmer's market, um, or parking there, ADA accessibility to the brewery, and just really finishing that kind of piece off, and then bringing the sidewalk in for the brewery, with the right ADA compliance to the parking lot, and so this was really one of those kind of finishing touches, it wasn't about us trying to pave the town. This was really just us looking strategically to what we have going on in our town, food trucks, farmer's market, brewery, Dixie Cream, all the stuff that's going on, and this was kind of a finishing touch, and we're taking advantage of a lot of the pricing that we're giving through them, through two thousand nineteen pricing, and it was the right time, the right deal, and might get in trouble with Robert, but we had to save each other what we did with Sixth Avenue and everything else, and we're applying that to what you guys have previously approved, to allow us to do this little extension, that got us what we wanted to do.
Yeah, and, and I think that, I want to be clear, that it's definitely, I know you guys are being smart about all these things, trying to, to give taxpayers for this, you know, we can possibly get, um, and, you know, set us up with the right service, you know, I, I just think that, you know, we, we have been, I put our word out there about pavement, I know you guys are as well, so it's just a matter of making sure that we are true to that, I'm pretty sure, you know, it isn't the right, you have ADA sensitivities there, and there's a lot of them there, it just makes sense, maybe it is something that we do, say, you know, we want to do it with something else, let's, let's get a little time to have that conversation, or maybe the, now, the whole conversation up there, with the pavilion itself, that are off, you keep it separate, because I don't want any negativity, or, and something that people are actually.
I get it, yeah.
You know, let's, let's do it right, figure it out, and go from there, and then get a quick pause on, we can teach the pricing.
I think we're actually trying to be strategic for you guys, as towns, uh, strategic in the pricing that we have, and looking there is that, you know, Robert, I mean, I understand we're not the people of the town, but what we want to do is be strategic, take advantage pricing, to make sure that we're, one, taking care of our residents, while at the same time, we're taking care of the town, for accessibility, for all the events that we have going on.
I mean, if the council, council wants to move on, and now, that's fine, you know, I think, we, we just get, right?
I have a lot of other questions, do we have like that hard surface on that road now, that could be near or something, that's in the soil, that you've been trying out, or using on other, your roads?
Well, we don't.
I'm talking about what's there now?
Yeah, we don't have, I mean, obviously, it's not our new stuff, but, you know, honestly, with ADA, whether we're using our new stuff, our old stuff, any stuff, we still get the potholes after rainstorms.
Okay, so that stuff didn't, wasn't a miracle?
I mean, it's not, look, it's dirt, it's, we're never gonna have a miracle with dirt, but what we do have is a miracle, the fact that, you know, it doesn't run off and bring high system solars.
Most of our seed.
Yeah, I mean, no dirt will, I don't make an ADA requirement, because you're always gonna get potholes.
My second question, what's the problem with the stamped concrete, if you wanted to make it look like brick?
Well, I mean, it could, while we probably want to use stamped concrete, you could do stamped asphalt, which would probably be a more cost-effective approach, you know, no different than what they did in Winter Garden with the crosswalk, but, you know, again, that paint wears off, it's, you know.
It's not, I mean, that's why I was thinking concrete, it's intentional, though.
Yeah, like, you know, you don't ever call it concrete, you can do stamped concrete, for the best, but the concrete's gonna be way more expensive than dirt, inch and a half asphalt, and so, we just have to be prepared to take that, you know, and quite frankly, when you look at stamped concrete versus stamped asphalt versus the brick papers, I think the brick paper is probably just as much, the same price as what the stamped concrete would be.
Yeah, except it, it has more maintenance.
Yeah, it does, but that's not a high maintenance area, we can certainly have attractive lines that we have, or Saturday, or maybe, excuse me.
Here's the other thing, too, you know, considering your name, and kind of assuming that, when we need, when we need to workshops on the areas, people were rather supportive of that, so, you know, we need to fear it, but I do think we should tap our options and put them out there, have a quick discussion, to ensure that we are, and sort of, I'll get, given all the information out there, basically, we'll.
Thank you for the question, um, since we're talking about ADA, which I'm all for, obviously, um, the Sixth Avenue here, too, though, are you gonna have an issue with that, that's also a big main area, parking lot over, and it's not paid, so, will we have an issue on the, on the other side here, if we're doing this, rating compliance should be, that, I'm just, right now?
So, you know, that kind of war, that was back there, how much market is provided, right? And so if we have this area, I want to put that way, that makes good sense to do it, it gives that much more number of spaces for ADA accessibility.
And maybe, maybe most of those can be have parking?
We could, yeah, I mean, that's really, you know, depending on what the requirement is, and the quality for that, but it could be that you have more ADA spaces that it will get that, but.
I said, would it be wise if we're not going to, if you're trying on this side, and on that side, that we need to have enough parking throughout the site?
Yeah, at the end of the day, staff will say, hey, listen, we have this, right now for catering, and we have this program, that will work, I think, but yeah.
We currently have two spaces, two spaces that are concrete and on floors, and then the sidewalk, yeah, we have a percent of all the, and we're gonna drop off, and one parking spot that we do have, where we typically have the, um, portal lets, I mean, you can see the bricks ripped up already, um, that handicap space, so it'll actually connect those two handicap spots that we currently have, and then the one in front of the brewery as well.
So we can get them closer, check it out?
We can, yeah, but as far as this, we have many good spots, um, on the south side, mostly for that area, but with the amount of activity that's in this area, we'll probably be more focused on ADA accessibility, and it is just so that we can see that we have that up here.
You know, when we were first looking at doing the admin and police department over there, the original design, we had like paving all the way around, it's old property, and more parking spaces and all that, and the residents really were not in favor, a lot of residents spoke up, were not in favor, so I think we should do, let them speak now, you can, we can voice all of the pieces, why we think this is a good idea, but I think they would appreciate that time.
Well, I think, too, you know, you gotta be, you, it can be all good things, but even all good things can be too much sometimes, especially when we're, you know, we're doing a lot of things at once, to make it as nice as we possibly can, I'm just sure, here, this was over there, and it'll be a good idea, that they, they can come back to us, tell us how it's going, with the new planes that are asking, so it's, it's about me. I agree. Everyone, council, is everybody in for that?
Do you need to make a motion in this room?
I don't think we need to make a motion here, I think.
That's, that's a bullet.
Requested, and we'll take one for now, and then we'll get it back when we have. And we'll table it for now and then we'll get it back when we have more delicate input. If, I will say, if, if, uh, it causes any issues with our other pricing or those other projects. One more question. Uh, how far does the payment go on six, past, does it go past the admin or at least the driveway?
On six. On six, over, on the south side?
Right here, where, where you park your car, over there, between the library and do an admin. How far does the payment go down six?
It goes to the.
Just past the exit.
Last side of the police exit.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so our entry and exit for our facilities is covered by payment, in other words.
Right.
Just a half block, Bill.
Okay, is it fixed down there to the, was there no, was there no entry to the payment that? Okay, good. It can kind of scale enough for that.
They, they've now created somewhat of a parking area, not approved, but on the, uh, south side of the library, uh, you know, parking area.
And, and I remember at one point, library entrance was changed to that, to six, is that off the table now?
No, it's not off the table, it's a little testing, I got probably interested in wanting to, uh, reuse the parking lot out here.
Okay, got it, thank you. I don't think so. But I just surround myself with some of our people, so that's even better. Um, next up, item five, injury consultants for stormwater master plan. I'm sorry, so is he going to get the workshop on that or not? Yes. Okay. Uh, we're, we're going to get, I'll give it a last second, we're going to workshop.
It's me. So this is a critical component to any town's stormwater system. You want to have a master plan in place that looks at the entire town and all of our stormwater systems and recommends projects for the CIP. In addition, the stormwater master plan also assists in setting your ERUs for your stormwater fund as well. So it's a critical component. You also, similar to pavement, you want a outside independent source to review the stormwater system and come up with a prioritized list of projects that need to happen. I often liken stormwater to the domino effect. You want to be sure that an expert's looked at it, prioritize which project needs to come first, so that you're not creating more issues by putting things out of order. So the stormwater lakes management plan is, is important. It's so important that the Butler Chain of Lakes approved at their June twentieth meeting that they would pay for half of this because they think it's important and critical for the town to have a stormwater lakes management plan. So what we're doing today is asking to approve that. The town manager did put it in the budget for this fiscal year, so the funding is there.
So, good partnership as well, I think. I've, you know, intended to say, you know, no one thing can make a difference, right? I think we do, in our care for a lot of things. That's, that's part of this. Council, any questions, thoughts?
I have the Butler Chain of Lakes board that's down us for quite some time and I need to spend, it's a great, it's a great place to spend.
Thank you. Whatever, pardon please, I'm gonna appreciate that. Oh, she did, there she is. I can't put you in there right now. Motion to approve? Rose, any further questions, Congress, or concern? Seeing that, we'll be voting on council motion. Aye.
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 Next up is Rossian FEMA reimbursement services, not just see twenty-five thousand dollars for our, uh, good for our people. And our FEMA reimbursement. Presenting, are you on this?
I am, I told you, eight items. So this is, this is an after the fact, um, coming to you with this because what we wanted to do is jump on getting Rossian on board. They're a, a company that, um, is well versed in this throughout the central Florida area and probably throughout the state as well. So we wanted to make sure that we had secured them to assist us with the reimbursement part of FEMA. They are also our monitoring company, so in other words, they monitored all the debris that we hauled from our rights of way up to Windermere Recreation and also monitored what we took out of Windermere Recreation and took to their certified site up in Apopka, which is really critical. They have all the tickets for all of that work. And so it's very helpful to have them, they know the process, they worked with FEMA on, on these types of things before. We've already begun uploading all of our items to them in a SharePoint site so they can begin to organize that and help us with this reimbursement from FEMA. So staff, hardly recommend that you do utilize this.
So I understand, you know, right?
And the cost of the work that they are doing is reversible as well. So if you're, this is going to be zero, it does take a lot of work, both of Nora, couple of works and myself to do this on our own, especially when we had to deal with, um, Irma. Um, and we were one of the first to go through that and it just was a hard process to get here, trying to get the money back. But on that, the best way to get the money back, uh, and just to possibly find other areas where we're able to get that money. This was, um, part of the procurement that we did several years ago, so this was actually included in that RFEW.
My only other question, and this is, so, uh, so this does give you a refund on the taxes, five percent of your total projects. Um, so that will pay for your disaster. Only thing, I didn't, I didn't put together until we were just talking. So there are monitors, well. Make sure there's no conflict. Sure, for sure?
Yeah, again, we had that discussion with them, you know, who's checking each other, isn't the same person that's over looking at this. This is a completely separate item, uh, where they're actually submitting the stuff, but, you know, if you have a whole other unit that does the, the monitoring, reviewing of the pickups and the reparations.
So for these guys, the reimbursement of that process, so that's, that would be my concern.
But I mean, the bottom line of everything, it's two separate divisions.
Yes, that's what we were saying, it's two separate divisions, kind of like, I mean, you're, Gray Robinson, you have one that has the spring, you have your law, you have the springs and, uh, criminal law, something like that, so that's what I would like it to.
If, if we were doing our own monitor, wouldn't we also do our own, you know, reimbursement, perhaps? It's the, you still need your own project versions. Just using an outside, we have to use an outside monitor base.
Just saying too, we are the ones that are submitting the reimbursement.
You're the sub, right, you're the sub, yeah. It's not, I'm not, just make sure we.
I understand.
Is it, that's a little, but, uh, all good, we should have a good disaster, be sure they can.
Yeah, we have to leave your consultant, uh, Phoenix tomorrow.
I mean, it's probably like a simple KPMG or FM sign off on this.
So, did you just say they'll discuss it, the, you know, consulting tomorrow?
Yeah, we'll make sure that everything is fine on their side, but again, maybe done this before, so it hasn't put up any red flags. Um, it would be amount that we're looking at, it's going to be a hundred million dollars, I think, once you start getting those heavy hitter projects, but over a million dollars, you start getting more of a.
Yeah.
Um, look at you, but we're always beginning to.
Motion to approve, question for the councilperson. Second, councilperson David. Any additional questions?
Aye.
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 Aye. Next up is the financial, this is for the purchase of a public works in this area, people will not succeed thirty-four thousand. Dollars. Questions or concerns on the side?
And we're currently driving a truck and this will be more efficient and, you know.
Really? Any comments?
It should come hard, yes.
I think Honda's on there now. I believe it is.
All right. Motion to approve? Actually, I'm here. Wait, I'm saying that. Fine, I believe it. Google, what's the best content in this area?
We'll get ready for pricing there, so there's really the energy to read back to you, but I know that they have a little time finding a car that is available right now. We actually had a whole, uh, for the last two weeks and the whole end on the sixteenth, I believe, so.
In fact, the issue is we buy our harbor, as far as, I guess we could do that in other places.
Yep.
Or, or.
Yep.
Yeah, well, this is the review minister, Boeing, well, James, whatnot, but Travis and Tony will drive that. To stay on reviews.
Wait just a minute. Okay, yeah, motion to approve. Okay, so, uh, so the top, the top ten cars, six of them. All right, I think we're all right here. Um, you can vote in with councilperson. Aye.
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 I can now park my vehicle, woo-hoo.
Item number two is amended budget for FY twenty twenty.
And we should look at this, kind of, to see. What this will count for is that I have a sand out of this. For my toes, we can sit there and start a draw. When you look at the actual breakdown, you have one point six, six, that's the only budget. When you look at the expenditures versus revenues, the revenues will show the loan that we took out to pay for the new town facilities. So when you take into account the expenditures, you have our debt service, three hundred forty thousand dollars. Then there was seventy thousand dollars for engineering services that lead into the town facilities. And then I think it was a twenty-five million dollars, uh, four million dollars, even for the town facilities itself. So what you're looking at is, it's hard to show, it's not a revenue that you're taking in, but it is the expense that's going to be counted. You know, if I'm part of this, or even this last year, we were in the same process. Um, but when it shows one point six million dollars over, that's not really the case. Uh, we made it about sixty thousand dollars over, but anything that we cannot reimburse, uh, whether it be through a current grant that we're working on or through, uh, the division. Um, but the maximum sixteen, that would be pretty much what we utilized for four, forty-five, for the, uh, we brought that dollars over for the, uh, payment that we did. And that was again, using twenty nineteen, uh, prices, as well as the ancillary projects that, you know, town councils threw, that was a budget for, like, for Wood Park, the, uh, cameras that we installed, that stuff. So, you know, when you look at the revenues, actually, we're pretty darn, almost running money, we came to how much we brought in. It was just those anomalies and expenditures on showing that there was a deficit. Uh, and with revenues, the only thing that was really clarity was the fact that it showed the seven hundred thousand dollars that we received in. It just shows that we were able to draw that one hundred eleven back to us from that account, uh, for the amount of money that we actually spent on our approved projects.
So we, we get the secretary, we get it all, we got all the reserves.
We had every hundred and we're five dollars per budget, which John can just, I think you're wanting to do that. But we are at one nine, one point nine million dollars as far as our reserves, and remember that's what stations did. Then your course, it might be over a little bit. Um, but also the next budget year, we're utilizing those reserves to help pay for the grants that we received, the HFT grants. Um, and also using our funds for water projects.
Council, any questions? So, I'm assuming a lot of this, or Martin's, somebody. Surely, they have less than a million dollars.
They have less than a million dollars.
Less than a million dollars. A hundred eighty million dollars.
Wow.
Thirteen million dollars insurance, they don't say that to, say anything negative about that. They say that, to indicate where we're at and what we're doing here. Good position based on our size. We have to accept, uh, we need a motion to accept this.
There's certain reason why, since I can't move one from one apartment to another without being put on town council, that is.
Council, yes, going to approve, round councilperson, uh, second councilperson, David. Um, any additional comments or thoughts, questions, we've been voting, councilperson. Aye.
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 Aye. I believe that concludes our official business, see you.
Yes, sir.
Council reports. Great answer to that.
I'll forget, um, light of.
Light of anger, is this writing, I'm happy to see Emily dance.
Thank you.
Well, this.
Look, ladies, it's gonna be a good issue, I know, everybody should have a good plan.
How does, sorry, I'm gonna preach you.
Uh, change it, go, go, I can't, I can't.
Great. I brought down, uh, you know, Lucy by the lakes, really well done.
Lucy by the lakes was a really successful event, we estimate maybe eight, seven or eight hundred people here. And, um, everybody loved it. Uh, we hope to do it again next year, probably not with the Orlando Film Hall, my son group. Um, and, uh, you know, everything went well.
I have to say, really harking back to some of the events that we used to do.
Oh, we're just.
You're oriented, everybody loved it. Can't say enough of, of how much, you know, they like.
Well, yeah.
You're really appreciative of the outreach.
And, and, uh, when we were winding down, you know, wanted to, um, give, we raised a lot of money and, uh, thanks to the town's facilities, staff and the residents allowing this to go on. And so it was nice to be able to do something that's free and, uh, get back to the town.
Great event, uh, at that event and, and other times over the last month, I've received nothing, but, you know, a lot of appreciation, how quickly we're, you know, you know, kickoff recovery, get things back normal as much as possible, people really notice, you know, and I just keep telling everybody, it's, it's, it's a lot of our work, but it's also that ability to learn, you know, experience, things we've done in the past, try to be a little better, uh, it, get quicker each time. I know a lot of it comes down to, you know, work on a lot of people's hearts.
Yeah, and Robert and Sam, thank you so much for taking down that community or building, what it was called. It made a big difference, seriously, if that was there, it would have not worked as well at all.
Sit down. Uh, no, uh, again, good news to staff, BD Public Works, John, um, not only with the recovery efforts with Hurricane Ian, but also Hurricane Nicole. Um, you know, we had a little bit of a short notice on this one, but again, through our relationships with, uh, some of the utility vendors as well as, you know, our continued relationship with Dobson's, uh, Rossby, um, Enviro Tree, we're able to mobilize pretty quickly. And we now know exactly what we need to do as far as documentation now with, um, Nicole, you're not going to be getting a FEMA reimbursement, that's why we're going to have just typical winds.
Um, Nicole, you're not gonna be getting FEMA reimbursement, that's why we're going to have just typical Wednesday pickup for Lindemere. Um, nothing is declared for Orange County, um, besides any of you know, it's local and state watches, but as far as any FEMA reimbursements, we have not heard anything from Nicole yet. Um, and I'm not anticipating for us to be any new.
I think we'll get it, yeah.
We're not getting that, um, but again, kudos to everybody and again, a lot of good memories this Friday. Um, I'll be here, um, I won't, but I'll be here to make sure that everything goes well, as well as, uh.
A ten foot break is over, mind you.
Well, yeah, it's not like years past where we had to, uh, send out the, the troops to find somebody, but, uh. Yeah, well, but, but again, you know, thanks again for everybody that's done a lot of hard work and again, thanks for, for Tanya. You see that she's done a lot of work over the last, uh, few months trying to get these things taken care of. I was hoping for a light agenda, but then she notified me that there'd be eight items on there, I was like, okay. It's not gonna be a light one, um, but we'll be working on that public workshop, uh, for the paving.
Yeah, we probably need virtual on that or something.
Yeah. Usually my search will get more, uh, response and a lot more attendance.
If you're any, eight times, hey, you got a car.
I know, I know, I know.
What the hell you doing?
I, I'm gonna say thank you by letting you know that Mr. and Mrs. Fitzgibbon have, um, are bringing in lunch for staff tomorrow and they would like to invite the town council to be part of that as well, if you would like. So I would like to thank Mr. Fitzgibbon especially for a lot of the work that he did during Ian. He was running around this community flagging down and jumping in front of every Duke vehicle that he saw and stopping them so that we could get our power back on. So I, I do want to give a shout out to John, I want to thank the P D for all of their work and ensuring that my team knew where the trees were down and, and we could mobilize and get Enviro over there to take care of that. So I do want to thank the team effort that we had for the, the hurricane and our leadership from Mr. Smith, so, thank you.
And I'd like to mention that the communication wants for all this to be excellent. Yes, so we knew, I mean, we may not have power or anything, but we actually knew what was going on and what to expect. And this is really comforting to everybody, so keep it up.
Makes people, you know, people know what to expect, they are usually not in a way better place. Seeing activity and all that. And, you know, and a lot of this is beginning, I have a lot of staff here on site, in a safe place, and if you would just stand. And I've seen a lot of positive response from residents about how everything's handled, so great job. I mean, I'm, you look on next door, there's people complaining every day about the stuff not being picked up or, you know, ours done, but, uh, great job, everybody, thank you.
So I know, I appreciate that, thank you. And so tomorrow is a day of appreciation for everything you as council and everything that town administration have done for my son. So tomorrow we're bringing in lunch at eleven thirty and I want to offer a welcome to you guys as a personal thank you to, to everything that you guys did and pouring out in our town, with the flags, police, the escorts and everything else. It's been a long time, three months, but this is our opportunity to just give back to you guys and just say, thanks. So come and join us tomorrow and, um, be with us as we celebrate my son's life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're not, we're not done with that, can you?
Nope.
There's a big guy poppin' that, cause thank John, we, we pop off for. He gets four tires tomorrow, so. Really seeing that film that's on for the town over there.
You gotta, you gotta, but you can't just leave it at that, you gotta tell the story, so.
Our, um, you're training this today, we're training, um, stop sticker plan. And then somebody got the real stop sticking all of the plans. And John, we didn't go over then. So, uh, the town of Windermere is buying you.
I have zeroed truck tires right now.
Uh.
It was real hard, it's very, very successful.
It was, they've got all four tires.
Yeah. We're gonna miss one. We can't make this up. Real quick, thank you guys, um, they showed up in the mock presentation, we did very, very well. Very pretty routine, um, and it was definitely in the lead of power, we had people sweating, um, people in new positions. It's constantly the other day, it was really good, but we've kind of hadn't sweated like that in many, many years around here. Uh, they did an excellent job, we had, um, really very few things for, for us to address. The recognition, mostly just to line the process for the last one so that we can get the assessors in and get them back out. And so I appreciate you guys for, a lot of you showed up, yeah, on the final meeting. December thirteenth to fifteenth is the next one, so I have something to say about that, and some others. That's awesome, uh, we had a hundred percent staff right now, with a ton of recruits who were very trained last week this week. Of course, the best training today, you don't want to take it out, I'm just sure.
Tell me if it was a new person that did it.
It was.
It was.
They'll never forgive me.
They'll never forgive that, he was freaking active. If they sit on the job, this wasn't their fault. Uh, but again, we're, we're busy month, um, last month, the pump that built, the place, parade. And we had all kinds of stuff on the lot, so, yeah, it seemed, seemed really working together well. On the top of that, of course, if there are a couple of work pieces in there, so. Training day tomorrow, so we'll be in there, so anybody that's in there, we start the happen there, um, with the leadership and, uh, that kind of the thing we talk about, I don't think we have a clarity communications, this sort of, so we, we talked about that earlier. So thank you guys for the support, the presentation, we look for finalizing in December, which means we get to walk to the commission in February, that's just the process. The commission only needs to be timed a year, so in February, all the people, for their, myself, Tom, and they will be show up at that and they are all accreditation that.
Proud of you guys. Where are the meetings?
I mean, thanks, you're right.
Yeah. Everyone's well. I never thought I'd see David pop off all four tires for five months, actually.
Well, that's what Chief said to me, it's like, are we still getting that free? Yeah, yeah, it was, it was. I felt bad for that new cop though, cause I just met him, like, two minutes before that happened. And he's like, do I still have a job?
If that's our, um, if our worst mistake, we're gonna love it. There's nothing else to do, or.